PA two, the sheriff's office, FY 2026 Gulf Source Resource Conservation and Development Council.
Let's look at that. All right, I got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Yeah, and Commissioner Underwood abstained from the vote.
Only because I was on the CND board. Just clarification. Okay.
All right. Let's see, we go to presentations. We've got, Mark, do you mind coming up and go first?
I wanted to spotlight one of the items that was on consent that y'all just adopted. And that is the funding agreement. We have the Alabama Department of Transportation to install a brand-new traffic signal at US 98 and County Road 91. So this has been a project, it's been a long time coming. We've been fighting really hard. This commission has asked for this project for a long time. And about, about a month or two ago, Commissioner Gruber met with Director Cooper, and we were able to get a funding agreement to split the cost of a brand-new traffic signal. Will be a mastarm signal, and that'll be going in at this location. And we'll also include in this project, this signal will be a 50-50 split with ALDOT. It's about a $1 million traffic signal. That includes utility relocations, and we'll split that cost 50-50. In addition, we're going to be adding left-turn lanes onto County Road 91. And we'll also have a right-turn lane to go on US 98 East. Those two items were included in the FY 26 budget that this commission adopted recently. And so this project is fully funded. As soon as we get the paperwork started, we've got the design about 80% complete. We're going through our ALDOT review. And once we get their permit and approval, we'll go to bed and we'll get this project underway. So very excited about this. Just wanted to announce it to the people in attendance and also the people that are watching at home. And thank you, all four of y'all, for your support, especially Commissioner Gruber, for his hard work in working directly with Director Cooper to make this happen. And this is a long time coming, and we're very proud to finally be able to bring it to you today and to move forward with this project.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to say, Commissioner Gruber, thank you for your leadership on that.
It's been long coming. I mean, it goes back several years, constantly asking ALDOT to do a study on it and everything. It was said, well, they don't want it. It don't warrant it. It doesn't warrant it. And so I think it was last year, they called us and said, hey, what? Guess what? 91 and 98 warrant a traffic signal. And so they said, well, we'll fund part of it. And then I guess it was earlier this year, we got a letter from ALDOT Mobile Office said that they would not fund it this year. Because they had to pull funds together for another project. So we met with Mr. Cooper, myself and Mark, and we talked to Director Cooper. And so we pleaded with him, and he said, okay, we'll fund it. So here we are. We will finally get it taken care of. You know, it's been long, long overdue.
And I know the citizens in that area really appreciate it, too. Law enforcement, everybody.
There are two that remind me regularly. And so when you guys met and they agreed and we knew it was going to be funded, that hadn't been a few weeks, really, they actually, you know. And so I texted those two people, and it was like, you know, thanks for the update. It wasn't like, oh, happy day. I'm sitting here going, you have no idea. We need to have a marching band and everything. You have no idea what a big deal this is. But they were just like, oh, thank you. And I'm sitting here going, you've been blowing me up for four years.
And this is a big project. This is about two-and-a-half million dollar project. To do all of the intersection improvement work that we have to do. And what people don't realize is also the amount of utility coordination and relocations, right-of-way acquisitions. So there's a lot that goes into this.
And stopping traffic on 98 is no small feat. It's, you know, they want to move traffic, don't stop it. And so it's major. And I know anytime we do anything, there's going to be somebody criticizing and saying we should be doing something somewhere else. But nobody, I always say, people don't know what they don't know. They have no idea what it takes to get something like this done. And thank you, thank you, Commissioner Gruber. Thank you, Mark and Frank and everybody that had a part of this, because it's epic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Ms. Deager.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I am excited. We'll have our 25-year employee, Mr. Forrest Overstreet, being honored today for his retirement from Baldwin County. And we have Mr. Caleb Hacker here to present a plaque for him.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
I get the opportunity to recognize Forrest's retirement. And I know I haven't been here long, but many of you know, I did work here five years ago under Madison and Cliff. And I started in Silver Hill. And I got the opportunity to transition to Baymanet and work with Forrest here. And me and him worked together at Live Oak. And I got to be honest, when Madison told me I'd be paired up with Forrest, this big burly man, I was scared to death. I did not want to make him mad. But through our hard work and us working together and swatting yellow flies together and cutting up, we earned each other's respect. And I'd like to remember on the times where we both were pulling each other out of the mud together. So, but one thing I thought about with Forrest is I want to let you guys know his loyalty. With this department, as big a man as he is, this man right here is loyal to the ones who respect him and he loves. And I just want to tell you that I appreciate your friendship and the way you, no matter what I had going on at the time, you dropped whatever you had and took up for me. And as for the Parks Department, I get to tell you, I appreciate your years that you spent with me. And I know that everyone that you worked with, with Madison and them, would say the same. They appreciate your time here with the county. And anything that we can do as far as in the future, call on us. But one more thing I did want to mention is if I had to tell you one thing directly is, not many people get to really make it to this next chapter in our life and as far as retirement. And I know life can be so stressful and fast-paced, but you are really blessed to be able to take this new chapter on. And I want you to go headfirst and just know that we can back you up.
I'd just like to say to all the guys and women, both men and women, on the North and the South Crew, over the years I have known and have worked with, especially to my former supervisor, who I started with him when I was just 18 years old, working with the city of Baymanet, and I transferred to the county in 2006 up on the cliff and Madison. I would also like to thank Ms. Felicia Anderson. Over the years, I've helped train her with the area around Bicentennial, with all the projects that she's got going on right now and everything, including the past. We've always worked really well together. And it's always turned out really smooth, transitional, and vice versa, all the way to the new future. I'd like to thank Caleb also for believing in me, even as a new supervisor, which I never thought was ever possible, but it is true now. I have a lot of hope and have a lot of faith in that he's actually going to be a great supervisor.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Forrest.
Forrest, I'd just like to say thank you for your dedication to the county and to Baymanet, you know, when you worked there. It's an honor, you know, to say this. And, you know, 25 years is a lot of time to spend in one place. And thank you for your dedication. And enjoy your life, because life goes by fast. But you know you can always come back and work part-time if you like, you know, with the county. You know, but anyway, I just want to say thank you for what you do and tell your family, too.
Yeah, Forrest, thank you from the bottom of my heart, the hard work you put in there. You've seen Live Oak and Bicentennial Park kind of grow around you. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't happen unless it was for people like you that were dedicated to seeing that area prosper in the park situation. So I appreciate all the hard work you and all the other guys did out there. And you're under some excellent leadership out there, like you said, for all you years. So thank you so much for the dedication and enjoy retirement, if that's what you're going to do. A lot of people nowadays, like Commissioner McKenzie said, as they retire and go back to work. So that's not really retirement, but do what you got to do. But we appreciate your years here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. The facilities up at Live Oak and Bicentennial, if you're part of all that, they always looked fantastic. I've never been there when it didn't look great. And so thank you for your dedication. And 25 years might seem like a long time, but when I look back, before you know it, life is poof. I mean, I wake up and I'm, oh.
Forrest, thank you so very much for, you know, all you've done, you know, in keeping the parks up. You know, to say if there's any good to come out of this, you won't have to deal with all the yellow flies anymore like you did. I can remember many years ago, you know, y'all had to try to figure out a way, you know, building curtains around the moors and everything else to try to keep the yellow flies from eating you up. the yellow flies from eating you up. I mean, y'all had cars, Kansas spray and everything. It didn't do a bit of good. But, you know, but y'all didn't stop. You know, the flies didn't stop. You know, y'all kept on going. But then we finally, I think we bought a couple of cab moors and to help it a little bit. But I thank you for your, you know, your dedicated service to Ballin County for all these years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right. Next is our public hearing. We've got planning and zoning. Case number Z twenty-five dash forty-two.
This is a request to rezone a little over three acres from M-one Industrial to RR, which is a rural district. The subject property is located in District Four. It's on the west side of two twenty-five and on the south of Carpenter Lane. As stated, it's currently zoned M-one, light industrial, and the applicant is asking for RR zoning in order to build a residential home. Here are some pictures of the adjacent properties. Here's a locator map. You can see surrounding is M-one. And there's also RR in the area. Most of this area is residential. The future land use shows this area as conservation development areas. The related zoning is CR and OR. Staff feels like the RR is a better fit for the flume than the M-one, even though it doesn't meet it. The surrounding area includes a mix of residential and vacant land use. The adjacent parcels are RR and M-one. The subject property surrounding that area has experienced minimal development. The current M-one zoning designation has been in place for this property since the adoption of Planning District Four zoning map in nineteen ninety-five. Staff feels like this would be consistent with the factors within the Ballin County zoning ordinance. It is not consistent with the flume, but staff feels this request is warranted.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
No questions? All right. Opening up the public hearing. Jay, do we have anybody? I can't see anything on my screen. I just went.
No, there's no one signed up for this.
Nobody signed up for this one? Just in case you got here late and you want to talk about this case, is there anybody here that wants to talk about this case?
We're at the temples.
Do you want to talk about it? Or you want to come up and speak on it?
You don't have to.
You don't have to if you don't want to. It's up to you.
We just ask that you rezone the RR.
Okay, sure. All right.
Okay.
All right, close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve case Z twenty-five dash forty-two, the Temple Property Rezoning.
And I'll second it.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, next case, ES, excuse me, case number Z twenty-five dash forty-three. Whoever did something to my screen, thank you. Whoever did something to my screen is popping up now, so thank you. Sorry.
All right, good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this is case Z twenty-five forty-three, the Kramer Property. The request is to rezone from RA to RSF-one. Here's the location of the property within the county. This is in Planning District Thirty. The property is located south of Mifflin Road and west of Wilson Road in the Alberta Community. It's approximately eighteen point four-four acres, and they would like to rezone for residential use. Here's the adjacent property images. Here's the locator and the site map. The property to the north is RA and its commercial land use. We see residential land uses to the southeast and west. We also see RSF-one zoning, as well as RA to the east and west. In terms of the staff analysis and findings regarding the degree of compatibility, the surrounding area, as mentioned earlier, is primarily residential. And we do see RSF-one zoning to the southeast and west of the subject property. The future land use map has identified this property and the surrounding area as primarily conservation development potential. And this allows for minimal development based on low-impact design. And here's the future land use map. So, upon review of these factors, the requested zoning map amendment would be consistent with the zoning ordinance and is somewhat consistent with the future land use map. And then, we also evaluated this using the scorecard, and it strongly supports the request. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
The question, I have one question. This was brought up to the county commission before, hasn't it?
I believe so. And it was.
Do you remember when? Was I on the commission then? I can't remember.
I don't remember.
I think it's about two years ago.
I think it was two years ago.
Okay, then. Yeah.
Wasn't it a different request, though?
It was a different request than RSF-one. It was more intense than RSF-one.
It was way more dense than this.
The previous requests, if I remember, had some requested business zoning along Canal Route Twenty and then some residential.
Yeah, I was on it. Yeah, I remember that. And RSF-one is thirty thousand square feet.
Yeah, that's the minimum lot size, will be thirty thousand.
That's right. So, that's just, in other words, to the public, or anybody that's listening, it's bigger lots than what most people in this Ballin County that wants, anyway. So, that's just what I got. So, thank you. Anybody else?
And the current use is really just woods. It's not really even timber.
Vacant.
Right?
Right.
Okay. So, when it's zoned rural agriculture, it's not really, there is a distinction, and I know Jay and I have been talking about this, there's a distinction between rural land and actually active farming, where you're trying to make a living doing it. So, I just wanted, because I know a lot of people have heartburn about anything rural agricultural, having a potential change of use. But, okay.
All right. Good. All right. I'll open up the public hearing. Jay, I think we got, what, two?
We do. And the applicant's representative, Jay Broden, also just signed up.
All right. Go ahead. You can go first, sir.
I didn't mean to cut in line, but I appreciate y'all letting me.
I saw you jump up real quick.
Well, I was like, man, I forgot to sign my sheet. So, better get on it. Yeah, Jay Broden, Broden and Associates, three fourteen Magnolia Avenue, Fairhope. I just want to kind of add to what y'all were talking about in terms of the density, minimum lot size and all that. So, the minimum lot size is, you know, thirty thousand square feet. What is really important to us and to the developer is to minimize the density as much as we can, really be good stewards of the community. So, what we're planning to do now, this, you know, we're still working through everything, but the lot sizes are going to really be between forty and fifty thousand square feet by the time it's all said and done. On the front edge of Wilson Road, we're also planning a lot of pedestrian paths, low-impact development techniques to, you know, add that buffer, create some aesthetic quality and to just minimize the environmental footprint as much as we can. So, that's the only thing I really wanted to add. You know, if y'all got any questions, I'd be happy to answer it. But I do appreciate y'all's time.
All right, thank you.
During, when y'all were planning this, you know, Canal Route Twenty is a main artery.
Right.
And, you know, Wilson Road is not. So, with the traffic, is there any way you could combine the driveways, make them, you know, have, you know, maybe two per lot or something, two lots for one driveway? You know, it would reduce the traffic a lot.
Yes, sir, absolutely. And that's actually something we've already been looking at, is doing shared driveways. You know, we're working with Sin Foles, BTJ, so we're working with them on the layout. To me, their requirements as well. But absolutely minimizing the traffic by using a shared driveway has already been part of the plan, so.
Well, that should be covered in the subdivision.
That was one of the concerns that a lot of citizens had out there.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Jay, we've got next is Ms. Engelmann. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jacqueline Engelmann. I live on Wilson Road. And I can remember in nineteen fifty-two, when I first moved here, how beautiful the place was, how rural, how absolutely lovely. And from the Marathon Station to Glen Lakes, there was no subdivisions, and there still isn't. So, we have always enjoyed this kind of lifestyle. There were trees on Evar and Blanchard's property, who owned the property back then, that I remember as a five-year-old, and seventy-three years later, those trees are still dotting his property. There are also a wide variety of wildlife that, whose habitat could be lost, as well as some flora and fauna that may not be able to be ever be replaced. And there are two historic buildings on it, one of a former post office and one a very unusual stone antique store. These trees and plants not only act as a habitat for wildlife, but they act as a filter for the air, water, noise and light pollution that comes from the wide variety of, pardon me, traffic that uses County Road Twenty and Wilson daily. I'm asking you, please, not to rezone this, but to consider not only those of us who live there, but for future generations, so that they may enjoy a more rural-type lifestyle. And I give you, I give you thanks for listening to me. God bless.
Thank you. Ms. Harmon? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's Nancy Harmon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What I thought I was going to say versus where I'm probably going to go is two different things. I'm a real estate agent. First of all, shared driveways are a problem, and that doesn't reduce traffic. That does nothing for the amount of cars that will be in a subdivision. You know, you could take no driveways, but there's still going to be cars. I think it's really ironic, the pictures that they showed were of the subdivision that is behind it. They showed none of the properties north, which is where my property is. My driveway lines up with Wilson Road. This subdivision, and how many ever, you figure two to three cars per home is going to dump out where wrecks happen weekly, sometimes, sometimes two and three times a week, at my driveway, because of already the traffic that is there. This is a historic piece of property in our area. It should remain the way it is. The way our infrastructures are right now, we can't handle the water and sewer that is needed. This particular subdivision that's already underway, that's been approved, you guys probably didn't know it, but that homeowners are going to be responsible if anything happens to the water, sewer, roads, anything, any of their infrastructure falls to the homeowners to get it back to the road. And unless their real estate agent digs for this, they don't find it. It's not NMLS. This affects people. These little tiny lots, I mean, he's talking an acre, maybe. Everything to the north, I'm on the smallest piece of property, two and a half acres. Everyone else is on ten, fifteen, fifty acres. This and that area, it, there's like a minor hill right there. The wrecks that happen, I've seen people lifelighted from there. They don't need any of that. There are so many things that you guys don't understand about the area. You know, some of these builders that are coming in, this particular builder has a one-star rating. Would any of you stay in a one-star hotel? And we're supposed to be selling these homes? You know, I don't know why someone doesn't do research for you guys to give all this information on these builders. I mean, where we live, we should demand a minimum of a three-point-five. I mean, I'd be kind of iffy about staying in a three-point-five hotel, you know. But a one for a builder in a hurricane area? I mean, I sold a home about two years ago that in an afternoon storm, not a hurricane, nothing serious, the ridge cap blew off. Six months from her buying this house, and they wouldn't fix it. That's what these people are doing. These cookie cutter coming in here, they're making a fortune off each and every subdivision. One on eighty-three that's been approved, you guys wanted a school bus stop there. Did y'all know that school buses don't run within two miles of the school? There are no sidewalks for those children to walk on. They're going to be walking in ditches to get to the schools, because the school buses don't run. But they have a school bus stop, that there is no public transportation for them to use.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that did not sign up for this case that would like to be heard? All right. Hearing none? Public hearing. Commissioners, y'all got any comment?
Just for clarification, this piece of property is not subdivided at all.
Yep.
It is one piece of property.
Eighteen point four-four acres.
And it's zoned currently rural agriculture.
Yes.
And if a subdivision were to happen in the future, we have updated our subdivision regulations that have a lot more requirements than some of the stuff that you have seen out there in the past. And so, with that, I feel better about any type of situation like that. And any concerns that are out there about the subdivision would be addressed at a point in time, if this is rezoned and if a subdivision is requested. Okay, that's correct.
All right. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve this rezoning request.
And I'll second that.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's approved. All right, case number Z twenty-five dash forty-four.
All right, this is a rezoning request to rezone from BCC, Base Community Zoning, to RSF-one, which is single-family. The subject property is located in Planning District Eight, which is north of County Road Thirty-four and east of Greeno Road. The subject property consists of around thirty acres. Here's the surrounding properties. To the north of the subject property is the city of Fairhope, which is zoned residential. To the west and east and also to the south is in the county and it's zoned BCC, Base Community Zoning. Most of the uses in this area is residential. The flume map shows this area as a mid-density development potential area, which supports RSF-three, single-family and higher up to two-family, and also a B-one and B-two. Just to the west of the subject property is also a village center. The surrounding area includes a mix of residential and agricultural land uses with adjacent parcels that are in the county, zoned BCC. And then parcels to the north are in the city of Fairhope and are zoned low-density, single-family, with the R-one zoning that allows fifteen thousand square foot lots. That's the city of Fairhope. Staff has reviewed this, determined that the zoning amendment would be consistent with the factors within the Ballin County zoning ordinance and is consistent with the Ballin County future land use map. The requested zoning map amendment was also evaluated using the Smart Growth Scorecard, and it showed that it strongly supports this request.
Can you go back to the map of the vicinity? It was, looked like scenic ninety-eight and County Road Thirty-four. Wasn't it off of Thirty-four?
Yes, north of County Road Thirty-four. It joins it to the north.
I'm just trying to place it, looking at it. All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the staff?
What did you say a while ago about city of Fairhope? You said something about?
The subdivisions to the north is in the city of Fairhope, and they have the R-one zoning. And their R-one zoning allows fifteen thousand square foot lots.
Okay, it's half of, so it's much more dense. It's like an RSF-two, right?
Yes, that's correct.
That we use. Okay, just clarifying that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Open up the public hearing. Jay, we got what, one item?
We just have one, the applicant's engineer, Chris Lee.
Mr. Chris?
Good morning. My staff did a great job of presenting this, and I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any.
I don't.
None. All right.
Thank you.
Anybody come in late to the meeting that would like to speak? All right, yes, sir, come on up. State your name, please.
My name is Ronald Von Tropa, and we live in the Saddlebrook community off of Manly Road that this property abuts to. And could you give us a better explanation in layman's terms of what R1 and RSS is first?
Since I'm not a professional, I'll give you a layman's term. I've been around it a lot. So this is in the county, and in the county, RSF-1 is a residential, single-family designation, and the 1 represents a minimum of 30,000 square-foot lot. So it means that if and when this, if it were to be subdivided, it could be subdivided into a minimum of a 30,000 square-foot lot. And she's asked to clarify about the City of Fairhope. City of Fairhope is right next to it. Is that where you live?
Yes, in Saddlebrook.
Okay, I don't know. It doesn't give me the name of the thing on here, but I got a gray here that tells me that's in the City of Fairhope. Your lots are much more dense. The minimum requirement is 15,000 square feet, which is half again more dense, smaller than, I'll use the word smaller, smaller than what this is. So this is actually showing it getting less dense as you get away from the city. And so yours is residential, they just use a different initials or whatever for that because it's their deal, not ours. But we also have some, I just mentioned it earlier, I don't know if you're paying attention, we have some updated subdivision regulations that require some minimal green space so that you don't end up with a complete, as people like to use the term, cookie cutter, which may be where you live. Where you live might look like a cookie cutter from on here. I don't know if you've got a lot of open space or not. It don't really look like it from the map. But this is happening at a time where that we have updated these subdivision regulations that will hopefully give us a better guided growth. And something that, I know this is still in the public hearing process, but something that people, I think, fail to mention is that as long as you give people a set of definitive rules and regulations to follow, that's the right thing to do in America if you're a conservative for property rights. It's not fair for the government to say you can buy, not buy, or not sell your own property. We should give everybody a definitive set of rules to follow. I run as a Republican, so I am a conservative, and I value property rights. And so I really feel like that we have come to a point now where we've finally, you can't unscramble eggs, you can't undo all the things that have happened in the past, and it's taken years for us to get to this point. And sometimes people will argue with me, primarily from the developer's side, no offense, that our regulations cost, make developments cost more money. And I would say, give me some data on that, because I've not received any, and I see a planning director looking at me like he knows what I'm fixing to say, is that the market drives the cost, and that's what America is all about. And the thing is, is the cost of land, the cost of construction, and the cost of materials is one thing that is driving it up. I recently was able to take a mini-vacation, just a few days out west, looked at the prices across the nation. We're one of the cheapest states in the whole United States. So I think that our regulations are not what's hurting, but it has helped keep things guided in a better, more productive way moving forward. So thank you for your questions, and sorry you had to hear my sermon, but we get beat up all the time as if we've been paid off, and I've not been paid off, not seen a dime of that money. I'm kind of like Forrest Gump in that million-dollar wound, but anyhow, thank you so much.
My concern with this development, because in our development, we had another property just to the east of us, a small development, I think there might be 20 homes in it, but they were granted access to their development through our development, and I was wondering, for safety purposes, fire, ambulances?
Well, that is something that would be handled if this property is further subdivided. This is just a request to change the use.
Okay.
Okay? So be aware of any subdivisions, applications that would come about, and that will go before our Planning Commission, which regularly meets the first Thursday of each month. So just, we are very transparent at the county. We post everything, and just keep in tune.
Okay, and where will we get that, on the county website?
On the county website, and feel free to call our offices or anything, or check to see when, if a subdivision, I would assume if somebody gets a rezoning approval, then they would proceed so within the next few months if they had all their ducks in a row and their financing and everything. That's their business, not mine.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, sir.
You have any more questions?
No.
Just want to make sure.
I've got a question, Jay. On this piece of property here, if for some reason we grant this rezoning, and then the applicant goes and gets annexed into the City of Fairhope, do they still use our guidelines in building the subdivision?
No, they would have to go by the city's regulations if they annex into the city. But the fact that they're going through a rezoning process with us kind of tells me they're probably going to stay in the county, because if they were going to go in the city, they would just do an annexation zoning process with the city.
I'm just asking, I don't know.
You had a, your finger raised. Would you like to say something?
Yes, sir. This doesn't touch the city limits of Fairhope, so we can't annex into this.
Can't annex.
Well, I thought that subdivision to the north is the city limits of Fairhope.
It is, but there's a small piece in between our property and that.
So you're not contiguous?
Correct.
So there's a, it's a long story, but this parent parcel was split in two pieces six or so months ago. When that was split, there was a 10-foot strip of land that separated this parcel from, yeah, it's a wild thing.
Oh, well, welcome to the county, stay in the county.
Well, that's good. That I like.
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't even remember where we in the public hearing.
Close the door.
I propose a public hearing.
I make a motion, we approve case Z25-44.
I'll second it.
Got a motion in a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, young lady.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Y'all do, always do. All right, let's. Public comments, did anybody sign up? Do y'all, can y'all see? I don't see anything in public comments. Did anybody come in late that did not sign up that wants to speak? All right. Press questions? I don't see nobody for the press. Commissioner comments? Who wants to go first?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
So I just wanted to express my gratitude to Chairman McKenzie for definitely a learning year for you, that you were a great chairman, and thanks for all that you've done for us up here, and just wanted to express my thanks to you, Matt.
Thank you.
Second thing, back in September, we did a proclamation for Cancer Awareness Month and dedicated our proclamation to the Blevins family. Just here recently, young Branson, just only 11-years-old, lost his life to, I don't think cancer, but to the virus, the parents said, that got him. The thing that touches me the most about this, I was talking to one of our employees earlier today, that how an 11-year-old boy changed so many lives in his short life. And it was brought to my attention that somebody observed a young person that actually gave their life to the Lord because of what was going on with Branson. So he has no idea, and I'm sure his parents do, that he's changed so many lives, and it was an honor to dedicate and have that proclamation done in their name, and when Amanda accepted it for the family on behalf of their church. So just still continue prayers for that family and all that are struggling with that horrible disease. And then Commissioner Gruber and I attended the first Southwest Alabama ACCA district meeting held in Baymanet. First time ever, we got it to Baymanet, and we finally were there, and it was a different style meeting because the ACCA invited all of our mayors to the meeting as well. So I think Mayor Bass, Mayor Leg Bass was there, and he'll say that it's going to be a good partnership to have both sometimes the cities and the counties involved in these talks. And it was a good meeting to have in Baymanet, so we didn't have to travel far. So I appreciate Skip kind of leading the show there, and it was, well, I think we had over 40 attendees show up, so it was a good meeting to have.
Yeah, I think all total was 53 or 54 showed up, that's what they had.
Yep. So that's all I got. Thank you all.
I'll go next, then. Being the spoke ready. Matthew, thank you so very much for your leadership.
Thank you.
And being chairman, you know, you did a good job.
I thank you.
You know, it's hard to do that, chairman job. I mean, you've got a lot that falls on your shoulders, and you know, trying to do everything else along with it. But again, thank you so very much for that, and I want to thank the staff also for what they do, you know, getting us ready for these meetings, our planning staff, you know, they go through a lot of answering questions and trying to get people to understand, you know, what the course is in planning. People don't realize, but you know, this commission cannot just turn somebody down just because we don't think it's right or whatever. Everybody has property rights, and if somebody brings us something and it's better than what it is, you know, it's hard for us to say no. But you know, and we strive hard to work with that. I know there have been a lot of changes in planning and zoning in the last few years, and it's all because, you know, we want to work together, you know, we're working with municipalities closer, trying to make sure that we have the right mix for zoning and everything else. And you know, just working with municipalities, we've got a lot of 30-Q projects that are going on, and that's going to help a lot of these counties, I mean, the residents in this county, you know, to help get them around traffic better. So I think we are going in the right direction, so thank everyone for what they do, and looking forward to next year, we'll have Commissioner Ball will be the chairman, and I'll be the new finance chairman, so I'll get to.
Pay the bills.
Pay bills.
And I'll second it.
That's right.
Oh, well, you can second that. How did I get a break?
Yeah, yeah.
My turn?
Yeah.
Well, Matt, I just want to say, chairman, thank you. I've always called you Matt.
That's fine. My parents gave me.
You have come a long way since that first meeting, and I don't know who to thank that gave you all those pointers, but I thank them as well because you have done an excellent job of keeping the meetings, I mean, Robert's Rules of Order, that's what it is, it's order, and you've done a great job with that.
Thank you.
At the same time, giving people opportunities. And so I hope you know this is sincere, that I'm saying it sincerely, because I didn't see you rolling your eyes at me or anything. So I appreciate that, and I think you've done a good job, and we look forward to you getting to make motions and seconding them now. So Jeb will get to be the chairman for this, last year of this quadrillion. And I probably, I'd be stepping off on something if I say what I'm fixing to say, but it's something I really feel is important. We have increased, and I feel like we have, strong subdivisions, and we have zoning in our county, which is very unusual for a state with no home rule. About 30-plus years ago, the legislators gave a pathway to citizens in our county. They didn't ask me how it should be done, but we are handed a hand, we're dealt a hand that's difficult. It's very, very difficult out in unincorporated areas for, to make sure that growth happens what people want to say the right way and not just, nimmby, not in my backyard. And, you know, making sure that we have rules and regulations that are fair and reasonable is not socialism, it's stewardship. It's called protecting taxpayers, neighborhoods, and our quality of life. When everyone follows the same rules, it keeps government limited, keeps it predictable and fair, and that's just about as conservative as it gets. This is a conservative county, a conservative commission. I'm speaking for myself right now, but while it might, you know, I hear people all the time that say, "Stop all the growth," and they're really asking for the government to take away private property rights when they say that. It's the truth. I can't support that. My job isn't to pick winners and losers, it's to make sure the playing field is level and that the rules are enforced evenly, and that's what good conservative leadership looks like. We can protect Ballin County without punishing landowners, we can have freedom and order, we can have growth and responsibility. That's what smart conservative leadership is about, and that's exactly what I stand for. And if you want to criticize me on social media, that's fine. I would prefer you to contact me and talk it over. I was talking to one of my staff members who's on vacation right now, and he said, "I think you do better when you talk one-on-one with people." I will never engage on social media anyways about county stuff, but we're very easily to be contacted, and if somebody has a problem with stuff, I think sometimes when you sit and actually discuss things and you talk about, "Hey, wait a minute, we have a constitution." And maybe you're, thank goodness, we're not in New York City. Look at what they're facing. But I don't think you'd move here if that was the case. But anyways, I didn't thank everybody, but I thank everybody, and some of y'all actually listened to me, I think, but stopped it. I'll stop now. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to the commissioners. Y'all are the ones that helped me get through this as chairman, and the staff. Anu, Roger, Christian, all the staff members have helped me get through this because it made my life a lot easier to help write on these little notes that I need to remember. So for the staff, thank y'all very much from the bottom of my heart. It means a lot, because you don't want to see me mess up, but thank y'all so much. Forrest, to the county employee that spent 25 years, you know, busting his tail, I'm proud of him, I'm happy for him, and I hope he moves on and enjoys life. Mayor-elect Brad Bass, thank you again. Thank you for coming here, being here with us. But other than that, thank y'all so much. I have a motion to adjourn.
Yes, sir.
All right, have a motion.